The record will reflect that all council members are present for closed session.
The city council to order, can we have the roll call please?
The record will show that all members are present.
Can we have the closed session report, the city attorney?
I have been told by special counsel Jim Markman and confirmed by the mayor that there's nothing to report out tonight.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance led by council member Hen? Okay, the first item in our agenda tonight is the consent calendar, Madam Clerk.
All matters listed under consent calendar, items one and two are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion, unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. I'm going to pull item number two on the advice of the city attorney to discuss that separately. And with this large consent calendar, is there anything anyone else wants to pull from the council? Anyone from staff? Public? Okay, well, we have no consent calendar tonight. Okay, step forward on number one, please.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Maybe we should read to the public what it is or something, so, or do you want me to do that?
It's a professional services agreement for the housing element update.
Yeah, and really, it's just basically a point of clarification because I wasn't able to attend the 11:15. Hi, my name's Dolores Otting, I live in Newport Beach. I was not able to attend the 11:15 planning commission meeting, but I did attend the 11:29 planning commission meeting. And at that time, there was some people or gentlemen from the Kennedy Commission, I think, and there was some question as to whether or not we had a housing element in place. And so, we were told that night that we did have a housing element in place. And since then, at the last meeting, there was other people that said we didn't have a housing element in place. And so now tonight, we're spending approximately $84,000, and I'm confused because how did we have a housing element at the November meeting, 11:29, and now we need to spend $84,000? And I forgot my stuff at home because of the rain, I was a little bit disheveled, so I don't have my agenda item to read from. But anyway, could we get some clarification on what was expressed at the planning commission meeting and how that changed to tonight? I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, I believe that we're required to update our housing element on a regular basis, but I'll defer to staff to explain that.
The mayor is correct. We do have a housing element in place. It was part of last year's comprehensive update of the entire general plan, that included a housing element. We promptly sent it to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for review. They asked for some more information, we submitted that, they would still like a couple more pieces of information. So, I would say that we are still in a review process with HCD. On their website, they show us as not in compliance because they have not certified that element yet. So now we are coming up on the next period for updating the housing element that the mayor referred to, and that is due in June of 2008. And staff and the general plan implementation committee thought it would be more efficient to wrap it all into one project than to continue to go through the effort of certification of the 2006 element and then start all over again with the 2008.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a motion to approve item one as recommended by staff?
Okay, is there anyone else that wants to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, call for the vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, on the city manager's employment agreement, I believe there's copies out in the lobby of the employment agreement. It's a sixth amendment to the agreement with the city manager. It amends the term of his employment as well as the terms of his compensation. And is there any comments from any members of the council on the contract? Now, let's, anybody in the public want to comment on the city manager's employment agreement?
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. Merry Christmas, congratulations Homer, Happy New Year. I've seen your name on that closed session agenda for months and months and months and months and months. I know you didn't always get to talk, I know that you ran out of time. But anyway, the last agreement I think that our city manager got was, hi, my name is Dolores Otting, I live in Newport Beach. And was for two years, and so this is the one, okay. But it doesn't say how much money Homer makes, and that's all public information and not that, you know, I mean, really, it's like, I hate having to come up and ask, I, you know, but in the meantime, I'm sure Homer's worth every penny.
It's actually on page two, section three.
Page, it's only this one thing out there, which is one page. Oh, it's, okay, well, out there is just this, so maybe you could just go over that then, because people at home don't know either. Thank you very much.
Okay, the city manager's base salary is $218,338 a year effective September the first, 2007. Okay, any other comments? Okay, close the public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion to approve item two as recommended by staff?
Second.
Any comments from anybody? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, I just want to say that this contract, I believe, reflects the city council's confidence in our city manager. We have a great working relationship with him, and we look forward to continuing that during the term of the contract, and we thank you for all the hard work you put forth for the city.
Thank you very much to all of the council.
Okay, continued business. The first item on our agenda under continued business is the North Newport Center Planned Community, the 500 to 600 block of Newport Center Drive, the 4200 block of San Joaquin Plaza. And our actions tonight are to adopt an ordinance approving the code amendment for the planned community development plan and to adopt an ordinance that approves the development agreements. Those are the two items that we are acting on tonight. And when you come up for public comment, I would appreciate that you restrict your comments to those two items. Do we have any additional information from staff on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a little bit. We have provided to the city council, and there are also copies available for the public, of a memorandum from the city attorney and myself, with another memorandum from Joe Faust of Austin Faust Associates, the city's traffic engineer on the project, which respond to the comments that the city council received just before your last meeting in two letters on behalf of Greenlight. One from the law firm of Lebold, McClendon and Mann, and another from Oroz Engineering Group, a traffic engineer. And then we've also provided the city council with one additional revised sheet to go in the Block 500 planned community regulations. We noted in the staff report a correction of a clerical error. This is the same error in square footage, and it's just making that correction in the final document.
Okay, any questions to staff? Councilor Curry?
Thank you. This is the prospective city hall site description, is that what this is? The 500 block description language?
No, this is merely a correction of the total square footage for the part of Block 500 that remains in the old planned community text, not the new North Newport Center PC.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to staff?
Mayor?
Yes.
I might also add that I believe was delivered to the council and to the clerk today, and then there's also out, another copy, copies out on the table, a letter from the applicant, the Irvine Company. It was written by, on behalf of Irvine Company, by their attorney, Chris Garrett. That also, I believe, responds to the letters that the council received.
You mean this one?
That's it.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public comments section. This is not a public hearing, but it's a time for public comment. Typically, these ordinances, when they come up for second reading and adoption, there's very little comment on them, but it might not be the case this evening. So, please limit your comments to the ordinance that's up for adoption for the planned community text as well as the development agreement. So, I'll invite anyone that wants to speak to step forward.
Merry Christmas, Dolores.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you and your family, and Happy New Year. My name is Dolores Otting. I'm a little bit confused, I wish I didn't forget my information. Anyway, I guess, I'd like some, I'd like some clarification and some more information on how the parking structure is going to work, who will be paying for that, what type, is that part of this development agreement? Can I ask that question? Because I'm confused as to what I can talk about.
That's part of the development agreement, so you can ask that.
I also, I also feel that because I ran for office with most of you, and I guess I must have missed a whole bunch, maybe, but anyway, when we ran for city council and when we voted on Measure V, basically it talked about that we were going to be approving certain amount of trips in the morning and certain amount of trips in the afternoon, and that we would be, you know, like be reducing non-residential development square footage by 500,000 approximately, while increasing the number of residential units. And again, when you go to the land use element in the policy overview in the general plan, it says the general plan provides, this is what was the policy that we saw. Now, I know that all of this changed until basically the last minute. But what's on the computer, and when you go there, it says that the general plan provides for additional retail opportunities at Fashion Island and hotel rooms and housing units in Newport Center. Office development would be limited to the expansion of existing rather than new building. And so, I understand that there's something in the general plan that says that you can do this, but when you do an addendum for something, you have no public input. It's, and I honestly feel that this is more than just a minor change. This is a whole different use. I know that you've made it traffic neutral, I wouldn't expect anything else from you. There has to be a shadowing that's going to be done on this project because of the heights of the buildings and Big Canyon, and I expect the shadowing to be fine with no problems. I don't know what time of day that CEQA-like requires shadowing, but I'm sure it's going to be from 10 to 2 and not later than that, because that's when shadows really do appear. So I expect everything to be just perfect. And unfortunately, when the ends justify the means, it's called Machiavellian style of government. And this isn't what we voted on. This isn't what, this is not in compliance with what all of us thought was going to be happening down there. There is no public input, and what will also happen supposedly, and you can clarify that for me, is that there'll be a planning director that will then be in charge, because we have no initial study, we have no specific plan, we have no plan, we saw no blueprints, we don't know what's going to happen, we don't know what the traffic mitigation's going to be. And that's why you have a CEQA document, to make it the best document. When I ran for office, my slogan was the fact that Newport Beach is not a community, I mean, is a community and not a commodity. So, I know we got a lot of money, I think they would have given us money anyway. I think that's what people do with development agreements. Normally, you have to establish certain benefits, and there's park fees and everything else. I just don't, I just don't understand, because there's going to be another project coming up, and that's going to be Mariners Mile. Mariners Mile will be allowed to be operated the same way with a development agreement, with no public input, with just an addendum. We have Cafe Panini. Cafe Panini's going to have to do more environmental documents to move down six buildings than the Irvine Company is going to have to do for this project. We have Newport North, why are they doing an EIR? I mean, we voted on that land to be what the spa, I mean, like what the land use designation is. So, I'm just kind of confused. Also, there was a Daniel Shanahan that wrote some, he wrote a letter, because we sued the city of Irvine over some of these issues, and we held up their project. And at least the city of Irvine gave the city of Newport Beach an EIR that we on EQAC looked at. We don't have an EIR, I don't think an amend, I don't think an addendum is the type of government that we want. I don't even want to use up my time, because I'm just very disappointed. And again, this type of government is a Machiavellian form of government, and it's not government of the people and by the people. We voted for something which was hotel, and we didn't vote for office, and we didn't think we were getting office. And if we got hoodwinked, and if that was in there and that was not ever brought out to the public, well, I mean, another snafu in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. I think I got three questions out of all that. So maybe the staff can address it, how the parking structure's going to work, the AM versus the PM trips, and then the expansion of the office use.
Do you want us to answer now, or do you want us to wait until all the comments, then we can give answers to everything?
Okay, okay, why don't we wait till we get all the comments, because there might be some duplication. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Jan Vanerslute, I live in Newport Heights. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'm speaking in support of the development agreement. I was a member of the GPAC committee, and actually, the development that we approved as GPAC members exceeds, and I want to compliment Mr. Mayor Selig and the council for actually cutting down on the amount of entitlement that the GPAC committee allowed. I see this transfer development within Newport Center as basically a shuffling of chairs on the deck, and that it is basically traffic neutral so that we won't expect any more traffic than we would get if the development agreement did not occur. However, I have a question about the, what happens if Measure B passes, which would allow, which would place City Hall above the Central Library. My understanding is if that occurs, and City Hall is not built in Block 500 according to the development agreement, then that vacant space on Block 500 will then be entitled for an additional 70,000 square feet of office space. So if people vote for Measure B, then we're not only going to have City Hall behind the library, but we're going to have an additional office space on Block 500. And I would like to clarify if that is actually what would happen. In fact, what we would get would be double the traffic. If people vote for Measure B, we're going to get traffic from City Hall behind the library, and we're going to get additional traffic from 70,000 car trips for the entitlement of Block 500 that is not taken up by City Hall. So basically, my, my comment is that it's much better traffic-wise if you allow the development agreement, and if people vote no on Measure B. If they vote yes on Measure B, we're going to have double the traffic. Not only that, but we'd be excavating 75,000 cubic yards, and we'd have all the expense associated with that, and the underground parking above the library. So it'll be a big mess if people vote yes on Measure B. So I recommend people vote no on Measure B, and also I think you're doing the right thing with the development agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comments and ask the staff to address Dolores's three questions, as well as the question on what happens with the 72,000 square feet if Measure B passes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. One, first indulgent, neither Sharon and I wrote fast enough to get the third question that you thought we had, we should ask. Do you remember what that was?
It's on the expansion of the office space.
The expansion of the office space, okay. Oh, on the consistency, okay. I'll try on the, I can answer if the parking structure question is as it relates to how the development agreement deals with the City Hall potential use of this parking structure. The arrangements under the development agreement are that if the city decides to exercise the option to purchase the property for City Hall site in the Block 500, that the city would also have a right to, from 300 to 375 parking spaces to be used free of charge in the parking structure that would be built on the property adjoining the City Hall project site. The city wouldn't own that, but they would have the free use for that property for as long as it's a City Hall site there. And the city would have to coordinate and work with the Irvine Company when they pull permits to build that parking structure, and making sure that the design is appropriate and works with the new City Hall's design. I hope that answers the question.
But the city would pay its pro-rata share per parking spot?
Correct.
But based upon the total size?
The city would pay the per cost basis of building the city's parking spaces.
The pro-rata share?
Just like they would have to pay to build the parking structure for a City Hall, wherever they put one, if they needed one. But they wouldn't bill, pay for anything else. They would also pay for the city's per space parking charge of the maintenance charges, and that's been worked out in the agreement to limit those maintenance charges. It's just to the maintenance and operation of the parking structure. So I believe that's all the terms that, how the parking structure works.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hen?
But the city would not have to pay for the cost of the land underneath the parking structure.
Correct.
It's just the cost of the improvements on a pro-rata basis.
Or cost of easement, or access to the land, or the use of the parking structure. Just the, just the cost to build them and maintain them, which would be the same cost that they would have if they did it on their own property. The other, the issue about the 72,000 square feet that was brought up by Mr. Vanerslute is the, there is a provision in the transfer of the development rights that the city would be able to utilize 72,000 of those transferred development rights for the construction of the City Hall. It's also provided in the agreements that any, just any construction of that 72,000 square feet would require a traffic study to show the traffic impacts. That would be the case if the city determined to exercise the option and build a City Hall there. The city would be required to do a traffic study. Or if the city did not exercise the option, and the Irvine Company decided to use that 72,000 square feet to build an office building there at any time in the future, they also would have to do a traffic study to evaluate the impacts of traffic from that structure. And then, oh, and then the last one. Well, I know that there are many people that have expressed concerns about the consistency with the general plan, and there is some language in there about the expansion of office. There is some thought to the fact that this is going to be taking existing, some of the, some of the expansion of office is going to be of existing office. In other words, that there are some office spaces on the Block 500, and then office space and other uses in the Block 600 that are being transferred that will be eliminated. And then, I believe that the intent is, is to replace that with the existing onsite and the other with an expanded larger building. The other issue is that it does, we believe, and I believe, that it is consistent because the authorized uses on that property are hotel, retail, mixed use, office. And that's exactly what's being proposed for this. So, even though there's not the 100-room hotel approved, that was approved by the count, by the, by the general plan, that was, that was actually approved by a general plan amendment over 10 years ago, and that hotel has never been built. So that's a transfer of that hotel into the office, plus the additional 65. It all matches, there's nothing inconsistent with the general plan or the land use designations for this, this development.
And I'd like to ask Joe Faust from Austin Faust Associates to respond to the question on the AM and PM peak hour analysis. And while he's coming up, I would just say that because his analysis on the transfer of development rights concluded that it would be trip neutral and not have an adverse traffic impact, then the numbers that Mrs. Otting referred to that were in the ballot for the general plan, and those were on an ADT basis, I believe, but those will not have changed because of our determination that this is trip neutral.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure for me to be here. My name is Joe Faust, I'm the principal of the firm Austin Faust Associates, and I did prepare both the traffic study for the transfer of the rights as well as the traffic phasing ordinance for the project as it's described. The question had to do with the peak hours. It has been the city's practice over low these many years to use the PM peak hour, and has been a consistent practice. In addition to that, if it simply weren't the practice, it's also called out in the North Newport specific plan. Going a little beyond that, we did in fact analyze both the AM and the PM peak hours in the TPO, so it actually was both treated. And then finally, although it's been the city's practice over these low many years, as I said, I even looked into, is it still appropriate? We did, in the study that we did do, we looked at 40 intersections. The PM peak hour is the critical, and significantly critical, in 33 of those cases. In the seven cases where it happened to be that the morning was the peak hour, those were level of service B and C intersections. So, and on the average, the PM peak hour is one level of service worse than the morning peak hour. So, even, even if you were to question whether the practice in the past, it's still valid today to use the PM peak hour. But even with that, we did do both of them in the, in the traffic analysis. So, I guess what I'm saying is I think we covered all our bases here.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the council, is there any comments anyone would like to make?
Move the action.
I'll second. I just wanted to make one comment, I didn't mention it the last time, and I thought about it afterwards. But I think that I, one of the benefits of this agreement is the dedication of the Lower Castaways property. And from a historical standpoint, we are now gaining the birthplace of Newport. 1870 is when Captain Donald sailed in with the Vaquero and docked at the spot, started a shipping business, and he and the McFadden, well, the McFadden brothers picked it up. The McFadden brothers and the Irvine, James Irvine, decided on the name, be called Newport. This is where we got our name. So I'm really happy to see Lower Castaways come under the city's ownership as a result of this agreement.
Any other comments?
Can I ask that the Irvine Company donate a plaque that's part of the development agreement then?
There's already two plaques there.
Oh, okay, well, that's covered.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, I've just got a short statement I'd like to read into the record here to, I think to document basically what we've taken into consideration, particularly in light of some of the comments that were made at the, at our public hearing last week as well as comments made this evening. And if anyone, I'm making this on behalf of the council, so if there's anything I say here that anyone disagrees with, feel free to, to step in on this. But tonight, we're looking at ordinances that are adopting the development agreement in the North Newport Center Planned Community Development Plan. And some of the concerns that were raised at the last public hearing and this evening, as I mentioned, I think we need to address. The first is the development transfer, the transfer of development rights. As part of adopting the Planned Community Development Plan, we are also approving a transfer of development intensity from Block 600 to Block 500, and putting into place standards for future developments, transfers. The city has hired Joe Faust, who just spoke to us, who used the standards we have always followed under our general plan, looking at the afternoon or the PM peak hour trips to measure whether there would be an adverse traffic impact. He used the same standard the city has always used for this general plan transfer policy. After talking to our staff about this, I'm convinced that what this really boils down to is differences between traffic experts. I think the city council can rely on our expert. I also believe that the council has the right to interpret our general plan policy, six six point fourteen point three, to look at the PM peak hour as the way to measure traffic impacts for these transfers. Global warming was raised at the last meeting, and I want to say something about that. I've talked to the staff on this also, and the short answer here is that nothing has changed from this when the council certified the two thousand and six general plan EIR. Looking at the information that was presented to us, I don't see any new information. On page thirteen of the letter that we received at the last meeting, it cites six or seven sources of information from two thousand and four, two thousand and two, and two thousand and five, most of which were available when we approved the general plan EIR. Lastly, I want to say something about the attacks on the housing element. We seem, there seems to be a lot of misconception as to what isn't, what isn't our housing element, that we don't have a certified housing element. The staff has assured me that, and the council, that we do have a housing element that was adopted as part of our general plan. The update does comply with the state law, and we do have all of the items which a housing element is supposed to contain. It was also said that we're reducing or eliminating housing units in Newport Center with this project. This is wrong. The general plan calls for four hundred and fifty units. This is a plan to build four hundred and thirty of those units. Doesn't mean we're canceling or reducing the remaining units. They're still there in Newport Center to be used by, by other property owners, and I know that there's at least one landowner in that area that's, wants to use those units. So I just wanted to get that into the record, that we did take into consideration fully all the comments that were made before we take our action to have the second reading in the adoption of the ordinance. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Selig?
Yes.
Before the council moves on to the next item, I'm going to go ahead and step down, and I think Special Counsel Jim Markman's going to take my place, and I'm going to take lead for the evening, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the group residential uses. This is an update and continued discussion. We really don't have any update to present this evening, so what we're going to do is continue where we left off at our study session last week, and allow anyone that wants to speak on this, this issue to get up and address the council. We would ask that you try and focus your comments on the proposed ordinance. There'll be a time limit, as normal, of five minutes for each speaker. And we're, we're going to be here and hear you out and listen to what, what you have to say on this issue. So at this point, I'm going to open the public comments section and ask anyone that wants to speak to step forward.
Good evening. Cynthia Kohler, West Newport. This is for the council members and Mr. Markman. I hope that all of you kept your packets that I passed out last week with Sober Living on the website concerning their alternative sentencing, because now it's gone. It's off the website. I'm handing out a new packet for the record, and for your information, it contains the first three pages on the web when a person Googles "alternative sentencing" in Newport Beach. There are so many advertisements for alternative sentencing for Newport Beach, I'd still be copying. Most of them are the well-known operators, Sober Living, Morningside, Newport Harbor Recovery, Newport Coast, Balboa Horizons. And then there's a lot of new ones that have just popped up promoting Newport Beach for alternative sentencing, even attorneys. There's eight hundred licensed beds that we know nothing about, and according to the web, there may be hundreds more. What is it going to take to make you do your job and protect the residents? We have had the burden of proving all of this and the impacts for years. And all the time that this was happening, the city was allowing and simplifying the rules for rehab business operations, affording them the luxury of answering to no one and the taking of our neighborhoods. We will stand for this no longer. These operators have stated they have no alternative sentencing, yet they advertise all over the internet that they do. They say they have no vans. There are hundreds of trips made up and down our peninsula weekly. I watch them constantly. In addressing the Daily Pilot, which I gave you, December fifteenth, Sober Living by the Sea said they are good neighbors. They have never worked with any residents on the negative impacts of these offenders in our neighborhoods. And as a matter for the record, we, the residents, are the ones who have become forward and made targets for harassment. In the Daily Pilot, they stated they have eighty-five patients at this time, yet they have licensed beds for ninety-eight, and who knows how many more unlicensed beds in integral facilities here in Newport Beach. Their numbers of beds fluctuates with who they are responding to. They say these clients are tested every seventy-two hours by home, and if they are kicked out of the program for violation, until they sober up, where is it that they go when they're in violation? Bill, the spokesperson for Sober Living by the Sea, stated that he could not use his last name in this interview with the Daily Pilot because he's afraid the rehab activist will track him down and attack him publicly, and he doesn't want to put his family through that. Yet he does not care in the least what happens daily to all families and what of these homes do to us. Mr. Peliquin states Sober Living by the Sea clients are middle-to-upper class, have a college education, and come from good families. These are not neighbors who are invested in our community neighborhoods. They are not people we spend time with. So how do we know that that statement is even true? Mr. Peliquin, are you telling us that you, Sober Living, discriminate as to who you treat? Does this disease just affect upper-middle-class people? And because you don't allow lower economic groups to come here, we should feel better about the over-concentration? To the Daily Pilot, I'm personally tired of being portrayed, myself and all the citizens who are trying to abate this as anti-recovery. We are anti-over-concentration. No one is against recovery. To the city and Mr. Markman, one thousand feet is what we asked for months ago, and that is where we are today. It is absolutely imperative. We need to abate all unlicensed group homes immediately. By passing these ordinances, it legitimizes what we don't even know is there. A used CUP, as Mr. Markman suggests, to me makes no sense. It would take ten years if the city could even find them, and our track record isn't that great to date on finding them. For the record, I still have not received an answer from the city as to where the minutes are from the last IROC meeting with ADP. And I still have not received a response from the city or the police department as to why our city has on its police webpage a website for narcotics registration. And I was wondering if anyone in the city could answer me, who registers under narcotics registration? Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have a question. Dave, those minutes that you referred to, I know what you were working on that. Is there any progress on that?
Councilmember Rosansky, they're on my desk now. I'm reviewing them to conform them with my notes, and they should be up hopefully by the end of the week.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Han.
And Homer, I'm presuming that the city police department can answer that last question regarding the website.
I'm not sure that we have anybody who can answer that question tonight, but I'll make sure that there is an answer to it.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm Mayor Selig, members of the city council, and my fellow citizens. Looked over the proposed ordinance.
State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed Vanden Bosch. Got a couple of questions and a couple of comments about this. I'll try to get it into five minutes. The, page six of the staff report, item DI, discontinuous of use. I think this needs work. Will invoking the one-year limit against a later expiring ADP license be a problem? I don't know. Maybe something needs to be included about licenses, ADP licenses issued or renewed during the moratorium. And I'm confused about the requirement to apply for a use permit or reasonable accommodation. Reasonable accommodation is not addressed at twenty ninety-one A oh twenty. Should there be a guide to which should be sought by whom? Or we're going to have a problem when an operator applies for one, gets turned down, and is time-limited out of the chance to apply for the correct item? Or will he try to get an extension after that to apply for one and then the other? Or should there be a provision that anybody that feels like they are qualified for a use permit or a reasonable accommodation, that they should apply for them both simultaneously within the time limits? Page seven of the staff report, item EII, the use permit process two, the application, items required to be included. There's a bulleted, bulleted item that says, "A declaration that the applicant/operator has not violated any laws, regulation, or ordinances at any of its locations, or if so, to specify such violation." Number one, I couldn't find that item in the proposed ordinance itself, just in the staff report. I think it should be included there and strengthened by requiring disclosures about any formal allegations that have been made against any of their locations, and information provided about when pleas of no loc, whatever, no loc, what is it, Mr. Markman? No. Yes, sir, thank you. And settlements where guilt has not been acknowledged. Page eight, staff report number three, notice of hearing specifies a qualified hearing officer. I didn't see the qualifications listed in the proposed ordinance. Maybe they're somewhere in there. And maybe there should be some other qualitative or standards for that. Page eight, staff reports, standards, bulletin, bulleted item, every individual or entity involved in the facility's operation or ownership shall be disclosed to the city. I don't think that's quite adequate. I think these people should be required to submit a photocopy of their driver's license or some other photo ID government issued, so the face can be matched to the name, and the city can have a photo on file. Page two, draft ordinance, integral facilities. Perhaps the wording of the clause about "under the control and management," et cetera, might say "and/or" and say also something about "direct or indirect or subsidiary of," just to make it as inclusive as possible. Page four, draft ordinance, integral facilities. I'm not sure if that's compatible with the definitions. Page fifty of the draft ordinance, abatement. Mention is made of timely applied-for use permit in one part, twenty ninety-one A oh twenty of the ordinance. Use permits must be applied for within ninety days of the effective date of the ordinance. But on page fifty-one, at twenty sixty-two oh ninety B one, the planning director has ninety days after the effective date to complete an inventory of nonconforming uses, and following that to send written notices. So I think number one, ninety days after the effective date is a really long time for the city to make a, an inventory. And I think an operator might possibly claim that he didn't know he was nonconforming until he got the written notice, which he wouldn't get until the ninety-day period in which the timely apply had expired. So maybe we should get something that makes it clear what the real timeframe is. Page fifty-two, draft ordinance, extension of abatement period for nonconforming use. C three says the planning commission shall review the application at a notice public hearing. C four says what the hearing officers shall consider. But I don't, I don't see in there that, I don't find any provisions for submission to a quote "hearing officer."
Mr. Hannah Bush, how many more points do you have there?
Three.
Okay, you wrap it up then?
Yes, sir. I think the hearing officer or the hearing bodies powered should be to not only approve, conditionally approve, or deny the request, but also to approve it with a shorter extension period. Page fifty-four, draft ordinance, abatement enforcement. I think in the enforcement, there should be a provision added for financial penalties for failure to obey the terms of a written notice of abatement, maybe a daily fine. Rights of appeal, page fifty-four of the draft ordinance, says the planning director's decisions are, are appealable to the planning commission, and then the planning commission's decisions are appealable to the city council. Is it really necessary to add two extra layers of this? Can we, can this be consolidated with the appeals rights or denial of the application for the, or extension? That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're not going to be answering all these questions tonight, but we will provide responses. And Dave, can we have, like, written responses to all these things that come up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did have just one request, sir. I'm not sure everyone is able to write fast enough to get all of that down. Would you mind, please?
I have an email.
Fine, thank you. All right, fine, thanks.
Councilman, new mayor, Mr. Selig. My name is Craig Batley, and I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Newport Beach, and my three boys grew up in the area, and they became Newport Beach lifeguards. I know the community. I've lived on the peninsula now for six years, and I've, I've met thousands of vacation families that come to the neighborhood with their, with their children. Of the seven or eight million people that come to Newport Beach every year, most, many of them are children. Actually, millions are children on the beach. In two thousand and four, September two thousand and four, the city council passed an ordinance two thousand and four dash sixteen. And in it, it said, "Individual group residential facilities within three hundred feet of one another have been used to provide services to the occupants of other similar facilities, creating a campus effect resulting in the short-term intensification of uses resulting in adverse impacts." I think that's what the whole argument's about. This is a residential neighborhood. According to general plan, the general plan recognizes that Newport Beach is primarily a residential community, creating guidelines that preserve the charm and beauty of our residential neighborhoods. The one thousand beds, more beds than Hope Hospital has in our neighborhoods, changes the character of the neighborhood. That's what people don't like. Now, I call it the Burnham doc, the Burnham doctrine. The Burnham doctrine was set up in this ordinance two thousand and four. What did it do? No regulation. You had a CUP in effect prior to the two thousand and four dash sixteen. That ordinance eliminated the CUP. And now we are again considering another ordinance, bringing back the CUP. It seems to me the city has not regulated anything in all these years. And now the doc, the document before us talks about the CUP and the, the process that one has to go through. However, it does not address the eight hundred beds that have been added since the, the ordinance three years ago. We do not want these eight hundred beds in the community. What we need is some clear standards for the judges or the panels that are going to be judging the CUP applications. Right now, there's really no basis for which they can actually turn somebody down. In order for the CUP to be administered on a fair basis and given city's history, clear planning-based standards need to be applied and addressed to the CUP process. Reasonable accommodation requests should be reviewed with the same standards, and in no event should be reasonable, should reasonable accommodation conflict with general and specific plans in our city. There needs to be some sort of an appeal process available to the applicant and the Grandfathering. I think the ordinance has written right now, grandfather's those eight hundred beds. Another thing, all the unlicensed facilities primarily reside in duplexes. Duplexes are a single-tax parcel. Right now, a lot of these operators have got away with the idea of, we have six and six. That's twelve patients in a building on one single lot. Because of the small lots in this area and the density of the neighborhood, that really is totally unfair. It, it has nothing to do with what the state law originally intended. We have twelve people occupying, let's say, a, a single parcel piece of property instead of six. It's not really a six and under. It's really twelve. Why not make the application process a little bit more stringent for an operator that wants to come to the city? First place, I don't even know why we're even accepting the application, since we have fifteen percent of all the Sober Living facilities in this, in the county. We have way more than our, our share. I don't even know why we would even consider accepting anymore. And I think this, it has nothing to do with discrimination. It just says, you know what? We're full. We don't want anymore. We have all that, all that we, that we need. Furthermore, they're all concentrated in zip codes nine-two-six-six-one, nine-two-six-six-three. I don't see any over in Camus Shores. I don't see any over in Newport Coast, Corona del Mar. There's some over in Lido now. What about our neighboring cities? Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa, Laguna Beach, Irvine? They don't really have any. Why are they all coming here? One reason, because this is an industry that has been developed on the basis of vacationing rehab. Vacation. Vacation while you rehab in Newport Beach. And, and these facilities are being paid for by private money. They're not state-sponsored.
Craig, your time's expired. Can you wrap it up?
I really would like to see the city get a little bit more serious about rolling back the existing facilities in the neighborhood. And I don't really see this ordinance doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
When you come up, if you could kind of keep an eye on the little blue box there. When the yellow light comes on, you've got one minute left.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Shapiro and I have lived on the peninsula for forty years. We've raised our family there and we've been very happy until recently. Is your vision of Newport Beach to be the drug rehab capital of the world? Think about this. Is that what we want Newport Beach to become? The drug capital, the drug rehab capital of the world? We do not want this. The residents of Newport Beach do not want to become the drug rehab capital of the world. We need to fix this problem. I don't know exactly how to fix it, but we need to put into place some ordinances that will fix this problem. Right now, we have an enormous concentration, and I'm going to move over to this map if you'll stay with me. Right in this area here, excuse me, I'm sorry, from here to approximately down here, of a hundred rehab homes. I ask you, is that your vision of Newport Beach? A rehab home? Every other home is now a rehab home? I don't think so. We must do something and we must do it immediately to fix this problem. And I understand Councilwoman Deagle had a tour of our area and was appalled by what she saw. I don't have to review for you all of the things that we have in our neighborhoods now due to these drug rehab homes because I'm sure you're well aware of it. My only plea to you tonight is, what is our vision of Newport Beach? It is not the drug rehab capital of the world.
Shelley Dopkins, resident of Newport Beach. With the proposed changes in the code, the group homes will claim discrimination because of the reasonable accommodation provisions of the law. With our over-concentration and extraordinary number of group homes, this is just invalid on its face. Don't be afraid of that one. The number of group homes is way above any average and the thing that they're looking for is that opening with reasonable accommodation. The other side of the coin and in Americans with Disability Act is the concept of undue hardship. Don't neglect this important provision. It is the opposite of reasonable accommodation. You've heard instance of instance and instance of undue hardship caused by these group homes. We have over-reasonable accommodated and undertaken our citizens undue hardship into, into our thoughts. This has affected our family life, our neighborhood, our community, and our city. A thousand feet of separation of group homes is a minimum we can ask, and I feel you have every right to put this in the code. In summary, we've reasonably over-accommodated. We have under-recognized the undue hardship to our families, our neighborhood, our community. This, on its face, invalidates their defense of discrimination. Five group homes per linear mile is plenty. You have a right to set this requirement. I've heard other cities have done this. Please do the same.
Joel Slutske, thirty-year resident. Last time we had this session, I mentioned about, you know, my hot button is a thousand feet. I think when I finished, Mr. Markman said he really didn't recommend that it be a hard and fast thousand feet, but certainly there was an ability to get a thousand feet into the ordinance as a suggestion or whatever. You said there were a couple of different ways of getting it in. I had heard about other cities that have actually incorporated a thousand feet. I called Oceanside this morning. Unfortunately, I just had oral surgery, so I wish I could have done this earlier and had better, more facts for you. But I did talk to Barbara Hamilton, who heads up housing there, and she thought that they were, either had incorporated or were considering the thousand feet. And during the discussion, she said that it would be good if all of the coastal cities could think about putting in a thousand feet because it would be helpful for any one of the cities to have that. I think we're the first ones to have that opportunity. If we can't put in a hard requirement, certainly we can put in a recommended requirement for, for the process. And I urge you to put the thousand feet in, in some form or another.
Good evening. I'm Willis Longyear. I've lived on Lido since nineteen sixty and my wife has been there just a year later. So we've been here for a while. I think the idea that it's a drug rehab center of the world is not true. It's a drug storage center. We're not rehabbing these people. They're running around the street. They're out of their minds with pot and things and nobody's controlling it. They don't have decent supervision and nobody's worried about that, except the residents next door. The citizens want ordinances enacted immediately. They want businesses required to apply for conditional use permits within thirty days thereafter. They want, or those businesses would be considered illegal, subject to immediate abatement. They want legal, non-conforming uses abated within six months or the lease expiration, whichever occurs sooner. They want no delay for surveys or inventories. There's plenty of evidence around. We have neighbors who bicycle and everything. And you can find these places by simply looking at them and looking at the people hanging around and making cat calls and doing all of the neat things that they do. We want no delays. It's a responsibility of business owners to know and to respond to the regulations that are posted, not to wait to be told. Or they should be subject to immediate abatement. This is a time thing and putting in ninety days here, ninety days there, waiting for us to get tired and not show up here is not going to work. And if this thing doesn't happen, we're going to have to take some severe actions that you're probably aware of and all the laundry is going to be hung on the line. But thank you very much. Goodbye.
Good evening. Lori Morris, West Newport. I would like to thank Councilman Hen and our new mayor, Mr. Selich, for answering my email and allowing us to be heard on this important matter tonight and the full five minutes to be heard. I really appreciate that. I could understand when we started a year ago that it was really hard for all of you to wrap your minds around this monumental task. What we, the residents, were begging for seemed to be just unheard of. How could we possibly get through all that? And there were so many details that it seemed impossible, but I think we're here now. And you had the operators telling you that anything you did would be discriminatory. I think we've proven that to be wrong. Other cities have regulated their land use and have done quite well. We've come a long way, like I said, and the ordinances that have been crafted by outside council, Mr. Markman, and the input of Mr. Titus and Ms. Tabor from Citizens Concerned Citizens, their input has created some good ordinances. But there are two items that are major concern to me and to others here tonight. The first, of course, is the one-thousand-foot rule that you've been hearing about. We asked for that and I believe that it should be added and that the operators should challenge it, that any judge who saw the unique characteristics of our city and West Newport, they would say it was not unreasonable to have one thousand feet separation and possibly even fifteen-hundred feet in some instances. We have three hundred foot setbacks, or three foot setbacks, five foot in-between houses, maybe. Our lot sizes are very, very small. We're very unique. We're unlike any other city. And this is, should be a non-issue. It should be added to the ordinances without question and let it go. The second item is the most important, and that is the eight hundred unlicensed beds now operating in a one-point-five-mile area of West Newport. We, as a city and community, must demand they be abated from our neighborhoods. If these unlicensed facilities are allowed to continue doing business as usual, we will be gutting the proposed ordinances. This city council must decide to step up to the plate and fight for our community. Craig Batley made a significant point last Tuesday when he asked this council if it would allow one thousand-bed facility to open in West Newport today. Of course, you would say no, and you would say why? Because it would ruin the residential nature of our neighborhoods and you would be right. But right now, if these ordinances are left as they are and left as they are written, you will be doing just that. Mr. Markman has said, "Well, we'll take care of that problem with the CUP process," but that will not stop the over-concentration we have today and trying to stop the new growth through that process. Will still not, still allow these profiteers to continue bringing in thousands of criminals on a rotating basis, making millions of dollars, running their businesses in our neighborhoods. The city says it does not allow parolee probationer homes? Well, how would you know if you had parolees fresh from incarceration or in lieu of jail in these homes? And if you pass these ordinances grandfathering these eight hundred beds unlicensed facilities, you will never know and you will be condoning it. These huge profit-driven companies have their meetings on how to combat angry residents and to control city councils. They have done this countless of times. We are not the first residents to rise up to save our neighborhoods, but I would bet we've been the most tenacious. I bet they never thought we would find out their dirty little secrets, like hiring the head of the Orange County Republican Party to lobby on their behalf, Mr. Scott Baugh. He's bought and paid for and in their pocket, waiting to advise them. Do you know why they never step up when you ask them to come to the lectern? Because they don't have to. They don't need you. They don't want your advice. You are irrelevant to them. Short of enacting stringent ordinances, they don't have to bother with you. And why should they speak? They have Scott Baugh. What do they need you for? But we need you. You were elected to be our advocates, to stand up for, against this kind of threat to our way of life. We need you. They don't. They want to intimidate you into enacting watered-down ordinances that do nothing to stop them. These ordinances should not legitimize grandfathering eight hundred illegal, unlicensed beds without any conditions of knowing who or what or how they're being run. Why are you going to legitimize this business that has taken advantage of a broken system? Fix the system. Fix the process and fight for us. Do not grandfather an eight hundred-bed institution into our neighborhoods. Do not grandfather illegal, unlicensed businesses. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Council, members of the council, my name is Bill Hitchcock and I've been a resident here for over twenty-five years. And I've never gotten involved in any of this stuff before, except for this issue here. And I'm not going to belabor the point. You just heard a very good speech by one of our residents and your constituents. We are your constituents and we hope that you will represent us and not a bunch of businesses. Now, we all, I'm in business here too, and I really want the city to be recognizing and accommodative to business, but when that business works against the best interest of the city and the members of the constituencies, I think you've got to, that's what you're here for, is to take, step back and, and make a reasonable decision. And we're just asking you to make this a reasonable city to live in. And right now, we don't think it is. And your job is to represent us, the constituents here, and not a bunch of other people. You've got to have been listening to all these people that have been coming up. They've got something to say and I think it's important that you listen to them and pay attention to what they're doing. We don't want to go through this just like we're going through this immigration issue in Washington, a new vote every week, something else they're trying to pass through. This thing needs to be stopped now. And it's just going to get worse because before you know it, they're going to be living next to you, not just us. And you're not going to like that. And your residents are not going to like that. Your friends and your neighbors are not going to like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Eric Olberg. I am a resident and citizen of Newport Beach. I was born and raised here and recently moved back to the area about two years ago to raise my own family here now. I sent you all an email on this last week, but it struck me, reading the Daily Pilot, about a discussion that the city was having with the state last week regarding affordable housing available in Newport Beach, or lack thereof, that this issue was very intertwined with the group home issue. And it seems to me that there's an economic argument for limiting these group homes in that they are pricing out future citizens and members of the community here because they are paying excess market rents and they're in turn subletting their residences out at excess market rents. And that is preventing families, younger families, from moving to the area and, you know, becoming productive citizens of Newport Beach. And I just wanted to say that, you know, if there's a discrimination argument to be had, it is probably a economic discrimination issue where we're giving into commercial interests, moving into residential neighborhoods than allowing affordable housing. So that's it. The only other thing I'd leave you with is I thought it was somewhat ironic as I was walking here tonight and passing the Lido Theater, there's a great movie there right now, It's a Wonderful Life. And the Newport Beach I grew in, grew up in was very much like Bedford Falls. And now that I've moved back here, I just want to make sure it doesn't become Pottersville.
Okay, Dick, keep an eye on that little blue box there. We love, we love you a bit. Watch the lights, please.
I'll try and do that. I want to just bring up the California Code of Regulations. We're talking about ADP, Alcohol and Drug Prevention. These people have to take courses. That's what they're doing. These people that are in six or under, those are required to be licensed by state law. In one oh five oh five, require, CCR, one oh five oh five, requirement for licensure. A, except for facilities operated by a state agency, no person, firm, partnership, association, corporation, county, city, public agency, or other governmental entity shall operate, establish, manage, conduct, or maintain a facility which provides twenty-four-hour non-medical residential alcohol- residential alcoholism or drug abuse recovery or treatment services to adults without first obtaining a current valid license from the department. That's the state. Now, all those that are six or under and claim they're sober living, they are covered by this. There's nothing in ADP that says if you're six or under, you don't need a license. In fact, that's made very plain that you do need a license. If you're ADP, if you have programs, you have to have a license. We need to enforce on these people. The people in those homes are licensed. Those beds are licensed. They're going to class. That's the only way that they make sense. Otherwise, they don't make any sense. Exceptions for facilities operated by a state agency, no person, firm, partnership, association, corporation, county, city, public agency, or other governmental activity shall hold out, advertise, or represent by any means that it is operating, establishing, managing, conducting, or maintaining a facility which provides 24-hour non-medical residential alcoholism and drug abuse recovery. That's ADP. That's what it means. 24-hour non-medical... So... Or treatment services to adults without first obtaining a current valid license from the department. C, as this regulation operated by a state agency shall not include agencies which provide services through a contractual arrangement with a state agency. So if this firm is being hired by our state, they would still have to have a license. Only the state itself could not. We're not enforcing this at all. These people are supposed to meet the state laws, and we need to hold their feet to the fire and make them do that. And when we do that, it'll work, and it works every time. But we got to hold their feet to the fire. They claim that their people are in alcohol and drug abuse programs, that they are being cleaned up. That's what they're doing. They have to be in a licensed program. The licensed program means it's an integral facility or it's a distributed facility because you cannot, unless the person that's giving the program controls the facility and has the person there to watch them, it doesn't count. So basically, we've got this. We need to just enforce it. And every one of those that say they don't have a license should be just issued a notice to get out. It's that quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
I'm currently the president of the Lido Isle Community Association. And I just want to very quickly address something different. That is your self-interest here. I'm speaking only for about 850 homes on Lido Isle now, the rest of Newport Beach, but it could apply to other places as well. Fortunately, we don't live in Transylvania, but if we did, I can assure you that we would have come over the bridge with torches and pitchforks to solve this problem another way. Instead of that, I think what will happen, if this proliferates any further, is you'll see people voting with their feet. Now, how many people does it take to change an upward trend in real estate values and taxes to a downward trend? Right now, we have three or one, or we have a small share of the halfway houses on Lido now. 1,000 feet, 1,000 feet which are debating now, would allow at least six of these homes spread across the island. Now, I know people there that would sell out and leave at six. If you go to 800 feet, which is a standard city block, that means we can have eight or nine on Lido, and a few more people are going to go. At what point do people start to leave? Now, our average taxes are there. The Jarvis thing is long gone because we're turning over 60 or 70 houses a year. So most of the houses are now reassessed and reevaluated, and their taxes are up there like everybody else's, probably between 10,000 and 15,000 a year on the average. That money, if just assume that you have some lower level of spacing or lower criteria than what people are asking for, those people will vote. Some of those houses will go. They don't have to live there. They don't have to put up with that. Some places, maybe they do, but not there. So let's just assume that instead of paying 10,000 to 15,000 a year, as people move, the houses, of course, could go down in value, you might be, that's the county, which comes back here to the city, you might be out $5 million in taxes a year. Could be. Could be very easily. And you could spread that around, I think, to maybe some other parts of Newport Beach as well. So the point is, gee, it takes 10 or 15 of us to pay Homer's salary. Do you want us all to pack up and go? That's going to impact on other things we want to do. Now, I know Irvine Company gives us a lot of money. Man, they're deep pockets, wonderful guys. But just the same, there's a lot of individuals out there that are helping this community in many ways, including paying taxes. And really and truly, the idea of the guys with torches and pitchforks coming off the bridge is much closer to the sentiment on Lido Isle than the, oh, hohum, we want to help some poor druggie for the 10th time go through the system. Really and truly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mustafa Soylamez. I'm a resident of Newport Heights. I'd like to just make a few points. They've already been made, but I think it's important to formally state kind of my position as a resident of the community. First of all, I think that nothing less than 1,000 feet is acceptable for all the points already made. I think we've already addressed it, but 1,000 feet would at least ensure there is a little bit of distance between the homes. Second of all, as many people have also noted, I'm extremely concerned about the existing unlicensed operators. I have three units with anywhere between 18 and 45 beds. No one knows. Right next to my home, what's going to happen to them? This does not address that. And finally, and this is probably my most important point, and it's already been kind of said, but I want to say it again, we are not local activists. We are neighbors. We're citizens. We're members of the community. I don't do this full-time. I've actually never been involved in any type of politics in my life. But we're coming to you because we obviously are concerned and we care about the community. And finally, and I want to choose my words carefully here, but I also want to be candid, Mr. Rosansky, your attitude and your stance and even your body language has been leaving a lot to be desired. And I've never once gotten the impression that you really care about what we're saying up here, ever. I know you've addressed this a couple of times, and I feel like that's because we've pushed you and pushed you. And I just want to conclude by saying that I hope the other members don't approach it this way. I don't think it's the right thing to do. We obviously have a lot of people who care, and a lot of people even who can't be here who feel the same way we do as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bob Rush, 20-year resident. I've had a chance to kind of go through this draft, this December 7th draft now, and kind of give it a little bit of distance from the first review of all the technical aspects of it. And I'm really still questioning in my mind whether this is really a sincere effort to resolve the problem. And I'll give you an example. One, we bend over backward throughout the course of this draft to give every opportunity to rehab operators to appeal, to get things right, to present their case. There's nowhere in this entire draft that allows the community to appeal any decisions by the public hearing officer or by the planning commission. There's no appeal process by the community. I could be wrong. Okay, all right. We'll talk later. But the important part, I think the most important part about this draft is that it really doesn't discuss what is considered an acceptable level of beds in the community. You know, I think that the only position that the city has taken is a memo that was written by Robin Colson and to the Assistant Attorney General, I think, stating, you know, some analysis that conclude that we are over-concentrated and if you look at it this way, we're over-concentrated by this much. If you look at it this way, we're over-concentrated by another amount. But I don't understand how that we can go about into this resolution without determining what is an acceptable number of beds. What's going to happen is if we pass this in its current form, that is, we go through an abatement process and using CUP hearings, at some point, we'll eliminate 10% of that 1,000, so now we'll be at 900. Maybe we'll eliminate 15% or 20%, we'll be at 800. And then there's going to be challenges, legal challenges to this. What is over-concentration? We're going to have to determine what is over-concentration. The argument that we would defend ourselves with at that point would be the same argument that we defend ourselves with us from the get-go now. So why don't we just put in a standard, eliminate the 800, abate them, and go and deal with the arguing? Deal with the argument. Go to court and argue it. Let's not wait, because what's going to end up happening, it's going to be a diluted effort. And this is where I come back to the sincerity of this draft. I believe what would happen, and I'm going to apologize right now for my jadedness, but what I see here is, what I see here is, is you guys are selling the community that a plan of action whereby we can reduce the number of existing homes right now with 1,000 cuts, each of those cuts being some kind of a CUP hearing. And there'll be appeals and counter appeals. And then you're saying, on the other hand, to the operators, oh, don't worry about it. You're not going to lose that many homes because they're going to get tired before they can inflict 1,000 cuts. And so, and then you politicians are going to sit in the middle and you're going to determine from year to year whether or not we take a 10% reduction or we allow a couple extra houses to come out, to grow. So we grow it by 2% or 3%, and then the following year, people get pissed and they reduce it by another 10%. And we get into this argument about what is over-concentration? It's going to be this. It's going to be back and forth, back and forth. And you're going to require that all these people come in at every CUP hearing and re-present impacts to the community at every CUP hearing? I mean, that's ludicrous. So, I mean, that's why I really doubt, I really have my concerns about how sincere this is. And I really think the starting point is determining what is an acceptable number of beds. We're going to have to deal with it down the road or we're going to have to deal with it now. Either way, it's going to be the same argument, the same defense. The problem with reverse discrimination, I hope, is going to get cleared up. I hope Mr. Markman will work with us in discussing that further, specifically the effect of taking that we had talked about the last meeting. We'll talk about that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Denise Oberman. Thank you for your time. I really concur with everything, and I am going to be brief. Just a couple of remarks relative to the efforts on the ordinances. The Concerned Citizens Council is now in its sixth rounds of reviewing and commenting on the ordinances. We note, it's kind of interesting that the proposed ordinance remarks and changes are closely parallel the citizens' requests that were made in 2004, which we appreciate relative to the R1, R1.5, R2, and MFR with a CUP. And, CUP, that's nice. However, the city elected not to exercise those aspects in its ordinances in 2004. So what we've got now is a considerably different set of facts that are going to necessitate some additional decisions. Instead of five licensed facilities that existed then that could have been judiciously reviewed, we now have 25, and instead of a total licensed and unlicensed of somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 to 200 beds, we now have over 1,000. So we are going to need to have a specific remedial plan. How are we going to deinstitutionalize the coastal neighborhoods? I know that there has been a lot of consideration to all these different ways to engineer a reasonable separation requirement. 1,000 feet is a reasonable separation requirement. Let's not try to open this up, as many of the citizens have suggested, to a CUP process that's going to get nitpicked to death, that's going to be proposing to administer it hundreds of times over, and where there are not articulated standards. We need to make standards about how are we going to remediate the coastal zone? We have a problem here. Whether the standards are appropriate to apply throughout the city or not, that's a political decision that you can make, and we note that you've chosen a route that's potentially riskier, which is to have a distancing requirement throughout the city. That's great, and we support it. 1,000 feet, it can be justified in a number of different ways, and I do need to tell you that we're not going to negotiate on that. So that's a non-negotiable. We need to have a sound planning-based objective going forward for the city in addition to space requirements. How are we going to manage this use? Where is it appropriate to be? How much is there appropriate use? We need to take a map of the city and have a plan. And that plan may be modified, but if we don't start with some basis, then the whole CUP process is just going to be a very expensive, time-consuming, and potentially risky effort. We completely agree with having a conditional use review and permitting process. It is a key component, but it's not the be-all and-all. So we need to develop sound planning standards, compatibility of use, reasonable separation to make sure there's no institutionalization. We can give you some more ideas, and I know that our counsel, our legal and planning counsel, has already provided some input. We need to get a process down. It's a sad state of affairs, but sad, but unfortunately true, that we cannot rely at this point in time on the inside staff or the planning commission to administer the CUP process. So we are going to have to designate some independent qualified form of hearing officer to go through this, at least through the initial implementation period. We would propose that something in the neighborhood, and again, as a target of a total of the 220 beds that are in the licensed bed parameter is enough. The decision will need to be made, at least for the time being, not to accept any more. Prohibit the unlicensed facilities uses. We now have, everybody says, hush, hush, but there is a formal relationship between the placement of people into rehab, business, recovery environments, and alternative sentencing, prison diversion, et cetera, and early release. And if there are no operational controls, there's no disclosure, we are putting our whole community at risk. We have people that have not recovered. They need professional assistance. They are not prepared to re-enter society, and we need to manage that. We need to manage it judiciously, conscientiously, as do the business operators. And, you know, any legitimate business operator within the city's plan and planning parameters and use criteria is welcome to operate here at an appropriate, reasonable level and with the administration of professional and transparent business practices. So we're looking forward to it. We're working with you. We've exhausted our statute, running the protocol of the city in this last year with many tens of thousands of dollars, and we are going to move forward with the objective of having a satisfactory ordinance to be read on January 8th. But we're not going to go through this forever because we are having cumulative effect, and we are very close to a tipping point in this community beyond which we will not be able to recover from what's gone on with the institutionalization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. My name is David Diamond. I've been here for over 30, a resident for over 30 years. I was not able to be here last Tuesday, so I don't know all the things that went on. But I have a couple of issues that I want to bring up. In the first part, when we're speaking about integrated homes, and they talk about operators cannot operate on an integrated basis, it seems to me some words that I'm used to saying were not there, and the words were directly or indirectly. were not there, and the words were directly or indirectly. And I was surprised, because that usually is in most legal documents about somebody being prohibited from doing something, and you might consider that. Secondly, there's no question of the serious effort that you and the entire city has made to try to address the problems of the city. I think you recognize them, I think you're trying to alleviate the problems. However, in looking over the proposed legislation, a lot of this depends on the quality of the conditional use permit, or the hearing officer is going to determine what is necessary. And on page eight, under standards, you set forth the standards that should be addressed or adhered to for determining what the use permit, what the needs are. However, a couple paragraphs below that, you indicate that in addition to the findings as set forth in the CUP, generally, there are about six bullet points, and then three, one of them, actually, there are four, one of them has three underneath that. And that's what I wanted to address here. And the last one says, whether the hearing officer should deem the American Planning Association standard of permitting one or two group uses per block would be appropriate, appropriate in this case, or whether a greater degree of separation is appropriate. Obviously, most of the speakers here today are indicating they'd like to see a definite distance requirement, such as 1,000 feet, that's what many of them are suggesting. The exact amount, I think, you know, can be open to interpretation based upon your point of view. However, I think that's important, that we give more direction, because all of a sudden, I'm noticing this, the American Planning Association, this APA, is thrown into this. And a little later on, page nine, defining and depicting a block. Remember, they're saying one or two group uses per block. And basically, they define it as an area of homes that are circumscribed by the streets. So if, for example, you looked at 39th Street that went up to Balboa Boulevard, and then down 40th Street to Seashore, this depiction, which is now made part of our law, would show 24 houses. According to this, they would say we could have two houses, two rehab houses in that area. Not only that, if you prolonged 39th Street and 40th Street to the edge, which basically is the water, you've got another block, a block, according to this definition. Of those six homes, you could have another two, because it just says a block. I question what the American Planning Association's requirements were based upon. City blocks of 5,000 square foot, 6,000 square foot, as they are in many cities, Fountain Valley, et cetera? This analysis of using their standard seems most inappropriate for the city of Newport Beach, and I think we're all aware of that. So I think there may be a little more work necessary on the law as presented, and I'll leave it to council and staff and for your input to try to correct at least what I see as some major deficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. I sat through the 2003, 2004 ordinances, and I'm so happy and thrilled to be sitting through the 2007, 2008 ordinances. I emailed all of you an email with regards to a television show called Intervention, and what was interesting about one of the last times I saw it was, it was on last night at 8:00 and 9:00, is the fact that they actually send people from all, they have, they send people, they go, it's a reality show about, unfortunately, people that are drug addicts or have alcohol problems, and they send them sometimes to Sober Living by the Sea. And the thought of 1,000 beds on the peninsula, and unless your life has been touched by somebody who is a drug addict, these people are not coming here because they go out on a Saturday night and get drunk and are late for mass. These people are coming here because they have no choice and they want to live, or their family members are forcing them to want to live. Because in most instances, these people don't recover the first time and don't recover the second time. And to think that you have 800 unlicensed beds in the community with people that are on their last leg of life, you have to watch some of these shows, in case you've never experienced it, to understand what it's like to have a drug addict that loses everything, including their children, to have an alcoholic that just drinks themselves to death, and this isn't like a neighborhood anymore. And I honestly question, how in God's name and in heaven did you get 800 unlicensed homes until 2004? And why would you want to say it's okay to keep them? And why would you want people to come into the community and spend their money to do that? When I was in the trash business, one of the things that they, and also with your trash contract that you recently had, you can get rid of a person in 30 days. But now you're saying it takes 90 days, 120 days to do this, to do that? I mean, in a way, it does sound like you're kind of wearing the residents out. We have one facility up by where I live, in Spyglass Hill. It's on Montecito. It's where Courtney Love came, it's where Nicole Ritchie went. You know, they have, they have drivers, food delivery, massage people, hairdressers, makeup artists, I mean, makeup people. They have a lot of activity. They require a lot of help. And they're sick people, they're not healthy people, so they're supposed to be trying to see what a neighborhood's like, but they're just living in institutionalized areas, and you've turned people's families into this. And one of the things, when I was in the trash business, a lot of people used to come up and they used to talk about waste management, or BFI, or whatever, but there wasn't a time when waste management didn't come to the podium, and they didn't, they didn't, they always tried to be a good neighbor. They always tried to get along with the residents. They tried to be the best company. They didn't want people talking about them. And in all these years that I've been up here doing this for the, for this issue on the drug homes, not a lot of people tried to be a good neighbor. And I know that was a policy that Steve Fromberg had, and also a policy that Ridgeway had, was to try to make every business try to be a good neighbor. I know, we can laugh, but that is what they tried to do. So I'm just, I'm shocked that you would want to keep 800 homes that are unlicensed. I have no idea. And then I really have a lot of empathy for the cedar and orange, because when you go online and look up those addresses, that went on for three years. There's three years worth of building permits, street change names. I mean, are we awake when we're doing this? Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to put a name to those emails that you received from me, Werner Escher. We've lived 43 years, 205, 40th Street. And it's interesting, Dolores says that, why would people want to come into our community? I think that, under the circumstances, they don't. Because on our block, Ed Van De Bosch knows that we have a neighbor named Doug, what's Doug's last name? Right. And he was telling us the other day, was it about a month ago, that friends of theirs wanted to look to relocate and come into Newport Beach, maybe it was about three months ago, four months ago, and with all that he's heard, they have actually decided not to live in Newport Beach with their family and children, and they're buying in Huntington Beach. So I don't know that, that really, under the circumstances, people really do, are shying away somewhat from coming into our community. And I think that the fabric of our community is certainly from the outpouring of the meetings that we've had, and the, I know in our 43 years, we've really never had a reason to come before council, and it's an opportunity that I appreciate, and I appreciate all your patience in hearing all of these certainly points and discussion, and thank you very much.
Mayor Selich and councilpersons, I'm Mary Gililand. I've been here many, many years. I just wanted to bring up the fact that I heard that they get $8,000 a week for people who stay. Whether it's $8, or 800, or 8,000, it's still a business. And as such, it needs to be controlled. The peninsula, as you know, is mostly residential, or has been. We want to keep it that way. The way it is now, we're beginning to have too big a concentration of people who are out of the area and who are coming in with entirely different desires and principles than the residents. The people who are coming are here because they have problems, and I can understand a few homes, but when you get so many homes, you just have too many problems, all concentrated in one spot. I hope that you will do something to control the number of people who are coming in here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the, close the public comments. I want to thank all of you for coming this evening. It's the holiday season, and I'm sure you'd rather be doing something else this evening. I think it shows to us how concerned you are about this issue, and we're concerned as well, and we appreciate all of your comments. Mr. Markman, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, we appreciate all the info that we received from the last council meeting and the many, many emails I've received from citizens, and we take every suggestion very, very seriously, and some of the suggestions made tonight, for example, will be implemented in the ordinance, so we just appreciate it. Again, we'll come back on January 8th with what we feel would be the most effective, valid ordinance that will deal with the problem that's been the goal from day one.
Okay, and we will have a response to everyone's question tonight. Okay, any comments from the council? Councilman Gardner?
Yes, just that we continue to work on the ordinance. The subcommittee is working, in fact, we've already made changes to what, in a week, made some additions, and we continue to work on wording with our, with the attorneys. So what you see today is not necessarily what you'll see on the 8th.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much for coming. Next item is public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, could you please exit quietly? We have one more item on our agenda, please. Speak up, Dolores.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. My name is Dolores Oding. Last night, when I was driving home from a meeting, again, in Irvine, you know, in Irvine, in Newport Beach, on Irvine Center Drive, we have the water. This, I mean, you know, the watering of the street still, okay? And I know that it's like that every night, and so I guess that when they build, when they redo Fashion Island, they're going to change their watering system. But in the meantime, if it was another individual or another business, they'd have to do it now. So I don't understand why it's okay to have this every time they water. I mean, they could change the grass now to something that didn't need to be watered. That's, okay, so that issue. And also, there's a dirt pile, there's a construction site going on where they're building a building behind the Newport Beach Country Club. And I thought, because when I was down in Balboa at a town hall meeting down there, I was under the impression that things had to be tarped in our community. I mean, I thought that it, because of dust control. Well, anyway, I called up the city this morning and told them about this property and this big pile of dirt that was there, and asked if it had to be tarped. And I was told no, and I said, but it's going to rain, and they told me it's not raining yet. And so then they said they would send somebody out, and in the meantime, it's still not tarped. So what is the story? Can you just build things and just make big holes and just have big piles of dirt all over the city? Is that how it goes? Because I know in my neighborhood, when the city comes, they make people tarp things, and I know that when we were told on Balboa Island that day, as a matter of fact, Mayor Selich, you were there at that meeting, and you told, they, all these people down in Balboa were told, just call the city, and they're supposed to be tarped. So it looks like it's one, if there was a place that, I don't get it, if we have rules here, then they should be enforced, they should be enforced no matter what. And if it's the Irvine Company that's having the problem, then they need to change what they're doing, okay? Because, and as far as watering our parks with really wonderful water, maybe you need to look at, you know, artificial turf. Because maybe it's going to be a cost savings on water, it's going to be conservation, they use it in the major leagues to play ball on, the maintenance of mowing the grass and the gardeners, and, I mean, you know, we have to think outside the box here. And I don't have any more time, so I can't talk about fluoride, but if any of you have ever, have ever been on Cipro, or Tenx, or Tegwin, or, you know, like Levquin, or Celabrex, or Prozac, or Paxil, or Diflucan, all these are, all these are fluoride-based products. Lipitor is a fluoride-based product. So what I'm trying to get at is that we have a lot more fluoride, and I'll be back in the new year, and I hope you all have a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful vacation time. Thank you for everything you do. God bless.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes. Mr. Kiff, would you check with code enforcement and see if they're aware of these evening runoffs at Newport Center?
Yes, Councilmember Gardner. I'd add, too, that tarping a pile is not the only option that someone might have. They might do sandbags, straw waddles, there's a variety of tools that someone could use for erosion control. So just because you don't see a tarp doesn't mean that they don't have erosion control there that's acceptable. And yes, we'll follow up on overwatering.
Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Joe Reese. I'm a resident here in Newport Beach. I have something to hand to the council. I'm here for two issues. One, I was here about a year ago, and I was complaining, along with a bunch of other residents, about Newport Brew Company, about them being out of control and so forth. And I'm asking if Mr. Kiff can maybe do me a favor and look to see, one of the issues that was brought up had to do with the Coastal Commission not allowing them to open up the entire business up till 5:00 PM, until 5:00 PM in the evening. And I know that they've been violating that on a regular basis, and I'd ask if that can be looked into to see what the status is of that. But I'm here tonight not to complain, and I know you've heard enough of that tonight. I'm here really, because I wrote a letter, along with a bunch of other residents in the neighborhood, this past couple of weeks, and we sent it to Chief John Klein, and I wanted to read the letter to you, because I think it's really important. "We, the residents of 30th Street, would like to applaud the efforts of the Newport Beach Police Department in cracking down on the alcohol abuse on the peninsula. Since this past summer, we have noticed the increased police presence and the enforcement activities surrounding the out-of-control bars and unruly drunks frequenting the peninsula. This zero-tolerance policy helped the residents enjoy one of the quietest summers in years. Not only was the police presence more visible, but the response to alcohol-related calls to service was more aggressive, resulting in more DAX and more drunks going to jail. The statistical information alone on the alcohol-related accidents speak for themselves as to just how unruly it has become on the peninsula. For years, it's been accepted and encouraged for individuals to come to the peninsula to get drunk. We are glad you are finally restoring order to the community and making it more enjoyable for everyone and not just the partygoers. Thank you again for the efforts, and we look forward to working together with the Police Department to continue to improve the quality of life on the peninsula. You have made a great dent in this problem. We ask that you continue your efforts." It truly has improved. I mean, this last summer, I can tell you, and I live right in the area of 30th and Newport, where all the bars are at, you know, from, you know, Rudy's to Newport Brew Company and to the other one, Malarky's. And you would not believe how much quieter it was. And it was because of the police presence to make sure that the unruly people, you know, who were causing problems went to jail. And I just want to let you know the residents do appreciate it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kiff will get back to you on the first issue there, too.
Good evening, Mayor Selich. I have a public announcement regarding, speak up, Newport. I'm the president for 2008, and that's not the public announcement. The announcement is that our first meeting will be the The announcement is that our first meeting will be the second Wednesday of January for 2008, January the 9th, and the topic is going to be airfare. Airfare was organized in 2002. Airfare believes that these citizens of the John Wayne Airport corridor cities have done our fair share in absorbing the impact of Orange County air traffic. We're going to have the people from Airfare come out and talk about what we can do to stop the future expansion of John Wayne Airport. We have an excellent settlement, a group agreement that's in place now, but of course, in a few years, that will expire, so we need to pay attention to this important issue. Okay, we meet at 5:00, Wednesday, January the 9th, at the Newport Beach Yacht Club. The address is 1,099 Asai Drive. And if you want more information, you can always go to our website, which is speakupnewport.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Any other public comments? I was just handed a note here to remind me that the Newport Center Drive sprinkler retrofit that's in the development agreement that we approved this evening is to be done by June 2008, so that's in six months. Dolores isn't here, so I guess I'll call her on that one. Okay, seeing no other public comments, do we have to do a motion for reconsideration or not? No? Okay, we're adjourned.